Okay, but anything? This is the Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, our vegetation meeting. The board was in closed session since 6 o'clock. We have all seven members present. Uh, we have been in closed session for eight minutes. It's from A list to know me agenda and we will all stand for the clip. Okay, please. At this time, the board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication petition reports from citizens or representatives of other public agencies. We do not know anyone on the speaker list or any other comments. And we will move on to reports and presentations. The first one I want to look at is the school improvement process and plans of Dr. Henderson. Just so you know, uh, video referred is that here at this team, so this meeting will most likely be audio only. Right, what do you think of the board bringing the case to be here, assuming to talk about our school improvement process in the district? So, I thought we could see this off our presentations this year, manager of our district vision, that inspired to all students, right, creating college, career, and life learning. And they will know that their college improvement life learning, the K and checkup routine will succeed. Uh, we do that through district level support, school support, classroom, student support, uh, and through rigor and relevance. Uh, we've three more important teaching priorities for this year. Tonight's presentation on the set plans will address those first, uh, priority of helping create a shared understanding and notion of the district vision, strategies, and priorities. So, uh, they adjusted our plans this year. I come to you in October and bring to you this wonderful plans for, uh, each of our bodies. And this year, um, that should really solve with increased offices for data analysis. We've seen that again in the plans this year. All we've got programs, smart balls, techniques for the balls. Uh, that's a part of it, where we bring some specificity as well as others. They're better than what my students determine when they have met their goals. And then we'll see that actual plans will work and done quarter by quarter. So, that's goals that are really breaking down programs down to align with short circle of confidence, reflective, and reflective. So, I can go to teach you for this component of the school improvement plan. And tonight, I am considering, uh, just how we translate that part. Uh, so each of the components you will see, uh, are outside our current, uh, actions going to repeat. Uh, and question trouble, which was the Jackson this year tomorrow. And I was a point break here with the annual presentation, in case you like, thought that question was interesting. And if you can quick jump off of that. So, the first component I'm looking at is data and the access. Uh, that's really a key part of launching a school improvement program. So, it's who's able to identify, uh, where they need improvement, especially in energy weekends. That's a very, uh, data that we have really pushed purposes to, or look for teachers identifying those data and thinking about how we are going to respond. So, if you look at this example, this is the data analysis portion for one of our projects in Florida. One of the expectations is let schools use multiple sources of data. So, you can see from the, uh, in the blueprint, uh, for this particular project, our city, Jackson is identified. Uh, this is available chart data, map data, and type data. So, three different sources of data that they are, you know, like if you examine looking for trends apparent. If you go upon, um, they've mentioned that three percent of the students at Jackson currently are following some divisible law or approaching expectations, so not yet a level expectations. And that was a concern for the leadership team at Jackson. Um, I've learned as well that there are access, we actually like that particularly with our I U consultant. It's very specific. Uh, they go further to identify what the strengths of students who have an I P or five, that are below corporate champion or beyond Fanta's and beyond. Um, and then the other thing they know, and they write at the bottom, is that when they look at the data more deeply, they realize that on the ground level, there are inconsistencies from classroom to classroom. And to find that presence is an opportunity for, for your collaboration and closely talking about the effect of instructional practices. So, the next component that we can learn from is the theory of action. Um, until the, uh, we really want to change, we can probably create, but, uh, district theory of action. And so this works, uh, much the same way, we're going to start with the, uh, side of the card. What do we want students to do? And in this particular, we want students, uh, particular, uh, participating in small groups and not wanting to buy teaching sessions. They are looking at how, um, practice larger work. They are having conversations about reading books, but they identify what we want students to do. And so, let me say, okay, if this is what we want our students to do, what do we need teachers to do? So, teachers are excellent in the workshop model. They are excellent teaching, uh, in celebration work for the nursery, and hopefully, they have the action steps that teachers need to take, so that students can think what we need them to do. And finally, if that's what we need teachers to do, what do we need our other principals to do? And so, the next one, Christine has identified that she's providing professional rooming, uh, and that can provide administrative instruction. Um, they talk about the, like, study development, making sure they're dedicated in time. So, that's what we're going to do for, what our principals do, to support the teachers, so that the students can get the help that we want them to need. And then the next component of the school improvement plan is a smart ball. Maybe this is one of the principles from, uh, Jackson's plan. Uh, a true search of personalities instruction from responsive teaching practices in literacy. We will see the following by May 2018, and then by July 2, March 2018. So, when you have a smart ball, you're looking forward to these specific. In this case, we're talking about personalities instruction, and they're going to be measurable. Uh, in this particular goal, they're talking about, uh, that decrease by at least five percent in each of the categories of the regular rubric that we use in our instruction rounds breakfast. But talking about it, uh, decreasing the amount of students who are below or approaching regular, like, 10% from Fanta's and beyond. You want it to be a table, reason for that, uh, second bullet point, we want to show decreasing the number of approaching categories by 10%. And it's not tangible. Yeah, to be the events, uh, our city, their data show, um, get up some literacy, so the goal specifically addresses that. And then finally, it's for this sweet timeline, so they're trying to find out from a room looks at the tablet by May 2019, that's our target date to see those results. So, on the, uh, saying the smart ball, the bill is move into creative action plan. And it considers the two cases that they really look at to create an action plan. The first is a theory of action, and it does slide to slide, uh, and then this smart ball, we use it on the last side. So, looking at all the information in there, that alerts are able to create an action plan. So, this is just a clear sign of the action plan for that literacy goal. So, you know, you can see the first step we put the workshop model, if that instructional practice, will be, uh, they're running, they're each classroom, and it's a fight. And there's a term of date, and it's September 17th. And so, that's all the naturalness from both theories that it's, uh, jumping within, as well as teacher observations. The great case about this, the same school improvement plan is shown with every member of the district. So, if your lawyer is going off or taking this up early, you can see that, uh, like Jackson would get more calls as that the workshop models up and running, by reflecting that need of intention, and more of an efficient human workshop model. And if our leadership team could come on, it should be able to work in every classroom. And another, um, and the action site about teachers and their PLCs and how that's going to provide improvement and instruction in literacy, that one is really important for Jackson's specific goal. Because in that data analysis, we know that they're introducing samples across the grade level. So, that PLC trends, it's very critical. And then this, uh, so, there is another part where, where all of us in the district are looking at the plans, the talks about, uh, reflecting the confirmed students' support. So, I mean, now that it's not too difficult, not a place or a sector, and we're still at Jackson's goal has many to both. But I can walk into something, and try to ask the student at the road, talk to them about the progress. And, uh, we kind of don't do that in the veteran industry, and forces that to those folks. Talking about the component that we can't exceed in the school improvement plan, but one is becoming an important part of our process. And that shift is the peer review. We do this twice a year, we give them a fall, and that I got through spring as, uh, the ones are heading into trying to, like, to look for some other plans that won't come up here. So, in the peer review, uh, we can get a number of detailed leadership meetings. Uh, schools are working at teams of two to three, and I believe that they're all from different schools. So, you can see the manager, uh, prior, uh, who was, uh, the very, uh, the very person who can see the work in partner. He teaches a time reading, he has a small plan, and that goes through each to court, asking other questions of providing constructive feedback that the principals want to take back to their buildings in the community, and think about what definitely they want to make to their plan. So, that took place, uh, first September, the C-12 meeting, uh, the month schools are in, which they even come with their peers and make some adjustments to their plan. Uh, it really has become completely a very important piece of our process. And, um, example we used tonight, Jackson, Jackson's being able to provide, uh, great feedback in our, uh, Christine's department with Aaron and York. And she was able to provide, Gary was some constructive feedback on data, and how she's spending, Aaron is able to be perceived to provide feedback on, uh, the numerous types of people at points in different parts of the plan. So, it really has become a very powerful process. So, what happens at the 12 meeting, the 30th of October, it's expected that puts calls sharing the final plans beyond their, their leadership team with all the staff. But it's important to expect that the principals share their post-home permanent plan with parents. This typically takes place during a T G A meeting, but we lost that they advertised it to the parents that this is going on, that they will be showing the plan, and they have to pursue this whole website, so the global parent tech access strategy. We also have, throughout this year, the teachers providing, uh, the hard dates to set, and parents are helping progress on the plan, and then we'll do a peer review through spring. And now, we're going to be here just a little bit for the Jackson's going for meeting.
I'd like for you to review each goal and the supporting data sources. As a group, give me three things that you like about it, two suggestions that you have. If you only have one suggestion, that's fine, and then one question you would like answered.
I would describe it as the goals of the school and what they're working on. And this way, um, families would understand, like, this is where we want all of our students. This is how we're getting there. And then this is how, in our special ed program, we might be doing it a different way, but we're working towards the same common goal.
The standards that we're supposed to be using guide our instruction. That has been a huge change this year, and a positive one, honestly. Because in the past, we felt a little haphazard. Now, we have really concrete goals that everyone in the district is using. So, we are more focused in our PLCs and even in our S L Ts.
So, the nice thing is with our leadership team is we have representatives from every grade level, as well as specials and also special ed. So, those people usually go ahead and take that information back to their teams when we have team meetings. And then the other nice thing that we're doing is, as far as some of our late starts or other times for professional development, as well as staff meetings, we make sure a lot of that work aligns. So, that way, we're not just hearing it in one place, but it's really guiding all of the work that we do schoolwide.
I think it's really important for parents to know that we are all working together on it, the general ed staff and the special ed staff, working together for a common outcome for all kids, and not just, um, our individual classrooms.
I want parents to know that we are truly focused, that we're taking these standards and these goals very seriously. And we are meaning constantly to come up with different ideas and thoughts and celebrations and moving forward with them. Kids are showing tremendous growth, and in the areas that they're not showing growth, we have lots of ideas to push them forward. So, I couldn't be more proud of where we're going.
So, I think the video had a really good structure, seeing the school improvement process last in the three years. And I feel like, uh, can this school improvement process can just be a box of stuff, a set of documents? And you can see from the work of the Jackson team, that it really is a teacher, a leader on the process that really tracks the preference of the school. So, um, I can answer our presentation, who I don't see, but people need to answer any questions or public feedback. Thanks, thank you. We've got a long one, Jackson, I think, I don't know. Um, I actually have a question from standpoint, uh, as I looked at it this year, my approach that the, uh, idea that where it's students' office, but, um, it's like, I, uh, adults in the system, turning all the students, um, the experience for all the students can be somewhat, you know, a classroom, and as they can reference, have they read the system? So, that makes me feel, okay, so it's not just about things because we have, um, staff. I think that's a good one. So, the question really is, um, I could see this informing the district, uh, as a personal, like, how they're sharing best help. Um, the supply as well as both the private, like, the county, or to support. So, I can see a lot more immigration with everyone in the district than in the past. So, is that, I mean, I'm trying to have the conclusion, you know, like, I want to ask you, how does that work both ways? Uh, for example, I'm trying to, uh, that it really doesn't, or we're working for district, whether, uh, we need teaching, it's, you know, what principals need to be doing. We really need to talk to them about what's the last, what does the district need to do? So, we're going to see that Christine needs to be able to provide a professional rooming. I need to be able to make sure that they have time allocated for that. And that I don't keep late starts and sort of rock the time for the district group and agenda, and make it a little more efficient time for that's going to be. So, that's just one example. Just to give a example, I said, just because of districts are, um, they, um, what we're having tonight, and that's, I go to very, they don't present, they're just going to come from, with, um, our data, our K P I's. And so, I guess that's, um, I'm liking that as well, and exciting. Um, if we see a, declare a new program of, um, math, um, you know, where, where the students, therefore, they are going to assist on the teachers and the principals, where do they need additional help? Um, you know, it's the beginning across the board, showing us not just whether school or program. And, you know, those particular K P I's that you're using, Christine, your school, for example, and your teams at a grade level. But that to A, to B, it is, um, very competitive, yeah, deployment. And, you know, what, like, what else can we do to push those students and how, and how does support still happen? Right, so, it's really important that not just any of the schools are looking at the data, but that even teaching is looking at the data, that we are with communities, district leadership team, all together. Or, so, we're just, but I think, I think, last news for this example, there, and I guess providing credit to Christine and Rachel, to both of her teachers, who help us, they have, um, was identifying their gaps, and, like, continuing to improve. And they, the team that not come back from, we are not getting a homework out with our special education students and classes to teach, and we're seeing that our practices aren't consistent at a grade level, we need to get that right now. So, I think she's really proud of the Jackson team, um, that they were willing to, so, honest, and their analysis and its help to develop the whole group team. The last question, um, which is, I tell you, I understand teachers don't know Jackson. So, it's a, so, teaching, so it's the school, it's the area's a team, so it's actually two clubs from two different things. So, we're in a place right now where we have a PLC leadership team, who's right there for LLC training this year, which actually, PLC is our second goal. And then we have a school leader team, so our school leadership team are more focused on our academic growth, which is really what we saw tonight.
Our PLC team drafted our PLC goal. So, what you saw was a combination of, um, both teams working together to come and talk about how those goals are related, but then really looking at the needs of what we want kids to be able to do. So, what the teams did is they drafted the student column and the teacher column at those meetings, looking at our data. And like Mary said, it was difficult to confront those brutal facts. Um, and one teacher actually was like, like, made an audible gasp, um, when we looked at some of our reading data. But this is only really our second year of workshop, and our PLCs are really focusing on planning instruction for the students that fall in that subgroup. Um, so what they did is they came together to review the principal column, which I drafted based on what they need. And they gave me really honest feedback about suggestions, things they wanted to change, revisions, things that they were really proud of in the plan. And then they each brought it back to their PLC team and shared it with their peers when we were in one big room together. So, then we could have some dialogue as a whole staff about what questions do we have? What's really important to us moving forward? What do we need as a group now that this plan is out there?
Okay, so then you have the two teams, the PLC team and the S L T team. And then how does it go out to all of the, um, teachers in the school?
So, those, so each PLC has a member on the S L T team. And then, in some cases, it's the same person on PLCs, but in some cases, it's different. You might have two people on your team that were as part of this group. Um, so they went back to their own teams and shared a draft of our plan and took them through a similar activity that we did to bring our work together as a leadership team.
Okay, so, just to clarify, so they brought it back to their grade level teams?
Yep.
So, that's how it gets back to every teacher?
Yep, and we're already starting to draft our steps for second quarter. Yeah.
So, okay, so I'm going to ask a question. Um, how do you then sort of follow up with all the teachers? Or do you follow up as teams? Or what's the checkpoint, you know, to where you say, hey, we're actually making progress? Um, I guess throughout the year, so you don't lose a year of, hey, we're doing this and we weren't actually making any progress?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So, it's part of their PLCs every time they meet together. They have these goals visible on their agenda. Um, so it's always there in front of them. We revisit them as a staff, but formally, um, we check in at our S L T meetings. So, we'll look at what data do we have from individual grade levels to show growth. Um, we won't formally give the Fanta's and Penel assessment again until January, so that will be a really great update for us. But in the meantime, we're doing some informal progress monitoring for students in that group every six to eight weeks. And so, we're looking specifically at those students together in a data review at each grade level.
One follow-up, and that is, um, when, so how is it different working with the, um, special education personnel, teachers, and the general ed?
We're collaborating, um, a lot more than we have in previous years, and talking about the instruction that's taking place with students across all environments that they work in. So, what does it look like for them when they're in general education? What does it look like for that student when they're in acceleration? When they're in their resource group, if they're an instructional student? And we're having a lot more in-depth conversations about performance, because standards-based reporting forces us to really look at the student work together. So, that's been a really nice tie-in to our literacy goals, we're really focused on the standards.
Oh, Shannon. Change, the standards-based grading. Um, for literacy, it seems like there's time, like, at the acceleration period, to get kids to catch up if they're missing something, but what about math? When is the time for that, so that kids can get the, the standards achieved?
Good question. So, we looked at math and literacy data and determined that literacy at Jackson was really our biggest area of need right now, based on student performance. For math, we don't have, like, an acceleration time built in our schedule yet for math. But the way that we're meeting the needs of those students is we have many teachers taking elements of a workshop model and embedding that into math. So, they're teaching small groups within their math, um, their math block. Some teachers are formally implementing guided math, and many teachers have taken classes offered by D 205. Um, so I have at least one teacher at each grade level trying some guided math. But all teachers have started pulling small groups to reteach for at least the students that we know aren't hitting those targets, based on our data for standards-based reporting.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say, compliment your staff for just sitting with that data and being really honest, because I think that's where true improvement and growth happens, is if you really are real about what's, where you're at.
Thank you.
So, kudos to your staff.
Thank you, I hope to have good things to report in May.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Jim.
You know, in, many years ago, when I looked at these school improvement plans, I, I just thought, you know, this is, I, I, I hope whoever prepared these got something out of it, because this looks like something that's going to get put in a drawer for the rest of the year. But, uh, when I looked at this year's, I mean, it's an impressive document, because for, for all the things you've already said, I'm not going to repeat it, it is all actionable, and, and I think it, it's, it's a great roadmap for what everyone in the school needs to do, and clearly, it's communicated. So, I just feel like we're all marching in the same direction now, and I just think that is fabulous. It's, it's great management, so, so thank you. You know, you know what, I'd love, and I don't want to create any more work, but, you know, what, what would be, uh, I think what would be a great thing to celebrate at the end of the year is to come back and, and show the progress that, that everybody's made in, in our schools, and, and we should celebrate that.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it? Okay, thank you. All right, um, school report cards and student performance data.
Okay. Um, hi, and, um, I'm glad to be back, uh, talking about, uh, key performance indicators. So, this is our annual report, um, on the district's key performance indicators. And I'm going to, um, give an overview of the key performance indicators, our K P I's. Um, and then I'm going to actually go to the third item, which is, um, just a quick review of the, um, state accountability system and the relationship of our K P I's to those state report cards. And then, uh, Dr. Henderson is going to come back and talk a little bit about the implications for instruction. So, just in keeping with our, um, trying to stay on target in terms of our district vision and how everything that we're doing fits into the priorities that we have. As you know, our vision is that, um, students are college, career, and life-ready. And so, that fits very nicely into our, um, priority for this year, related to creating that shared understanding, and particularly, the measurement of the district vision. So, when we met in, um, in July, and actually in May, as an administrative team, we talked a lot about that vision, what it meant, um, how we would operationalize it, and we talked about that in terms of measurement of those six Cs, but also in terms of some of these kind of standardized measures, um, that we know we have to be taking a look at to help us understand, how will we know if our students are leaving us college, career, and life-ready? So, that's a lot of what I'm going to be talking about today, is, um, when, as you're thinking about the, um, many slides that I'm about to show you, um, the extent to which they help us understand, are, do we feel like our students are becoming college, career, and life-ready, um, while we have them? So, this is the list of the key performance indicators that I'll be talking about tonight. There are a few differences, um, from the presentation, um, from last year. And I just wanted to briefly mention some of the why behind some of those changes. Um, part of it is we, um, you know, are continuing to have change in our assessment systems and in the assessments that we administer to students, and so some of those changes need to be reflected in these key performance indicators. An example is, um, we're no longer administering MAP as often as we had in the past. Um, and as you And as you know, we've implemented the Fontes and Pennell reading assessment at the elementary level as well. So some of those changes, as they happen, get incorporated into our key performance indicators. We also see some changes in terms of our ability to use data differently and to improve our measurement. So some of those are being incorporated as well. And we'll start to look at some growth data this time around, which I think is a positive change for us. Most importantly, my hope is that the things that we're showing this year will better align to that district vision. So they're really helping us try to think about, again, like, are our students leaving us college, career and life-ready? And some of the things that we talked about last time, could we look directly at whether or not our students do in fact go on to college? Are they successful in college? We have a few of those indicators that we're starting to incorporate now. I'm not gonna walk through all of the changes, but if you want all the gory details about the specifics of what's different this year from last year, I've tried to make them very transparent here by crossing a bunch of things out and adding in red some things that are new. And if anyone has any questions about those, I'll be happy to address them. But I'm assuming you'd like to get onto the data, so I'm gonna go ahead and do that. Again, here's the list of what you're about to see, so I hope the anticipation is building. So we're gonna start actually at the high school level with the achievement indicators related to test scores. So this is one of our indicators of, you know, that sort of speaks directly to whether or not our students are college-ready because the SAT is one of those assessments that they may very well need in order to get into college. So this year, the average score you'll see here, and you'll see those scores for math and for the evidence-based reading and writing as well. This represents all of our 11th grade students for 2018. So remember that all the data I'm showing you is looking backwards to 2017, 18 school year, with the hope that we can take that and think forward in terms of planning. So the composite average is a couple of points down. The math is a little bit up. The evidence-based reading and writing is a couple of points down. So there are some minor changes in that average. That's an average, though. I think what is a little bit more interesting to look at is the distribution of scores. So we looked at a slide similar to this last year. This just shows you the percentages of students within each of the national percentile scores that students receive. So for example, that big bar that you see all the way on the right is showing you the percentage of students who scored above the 90th percentile, so between the 91st and 99th percentile. And it is a, it is a big number. We have quite a few students who are very high-performing. You'll see, you'll see that the tail goes quite a long way, all the way to the left here. So we have, you know, between a quarter and a third of our students who are really performing very well above average. If you add up all of the students who are performing at the 50th percentile or above, it's about 75% of our students, so that's great. It does mean we have 25% of our students who are not performing above, above average. And what you will see if you look at the students who are really kind of far on the left, those are, that are at the 30th percentile or below, is that about half of them are eligible for free and reduced price lunch, compared to 15% in the total population. So they're overrepresented at the lower end. Similarly, Hispanic students and African-American students are overrepresented in the lower-performing students, as are students who have IEPs. And we'll look specifically at some of those subgroups, but just to give you a sense of in the distribution where they stand. The College Board puts out college and career readiness benchmarks. So this is another way for them to think about, are our students on track to be successful in college? And so the College Board comes up with these benchmarks by actually following, they did a study where they followed a set of students into college and looked at whether or not they were successful in their first semester English, introductory English or math courses. So they look to see whether or not, they look, they look for the score that corresponds to a 75% probability of getting a C or greater in those, in those introductory courses in college. So that's where these, excuse me, these cut scores come from that they publish. And you'll see that the majority of our students meet the benchmark, the EBRW benchmark, and similarly for math, and 68% meet, meet those benchmarks. As we talked about before, I mean, you do see that of the students who don't meet these benchmarks, they tend to be some of the subgroups that we're gonna be looking at a little bit further. So the College Board puts out its benchmarks to let you know whether or not students are on track. The state also sets its own proficiency standards based on the SAT. And theirs are different than the College Board's. So they use a standard-setting process, which is similar to those that are used for all kinds of high-stakes assessments. And you'll see that if you look at the state's benchmarks, which divide our students up into four levels of performance, about 64% of our students are meeting or exceeding the state standard in the, in the EBRW scale and about 65% for math. So compared to the state, those numbers, the numbers for the state are roughly 35 to 40% of students are meeting or exceeding. And we're at about 65% of our students are meeting or exceeding, so we're above the state average. But you'll notice that these numbers look different than these numbers. And one might say, well, which number should we believe? The answer is, I don't know how to answer that question, but I think that both of them probably tell us a little bit something. And it's a question of how do we want to use this information? So this information tells us something. And it's been criticized for the sample that the College Board uses. And there are always things that you can say could be better about the study that they did. This has been criticized because, in fact, it doesn't map to this, nor does it map to the numbers of students who actually go on to college. So I think that is a fair criticism of the state's performance levels, is that if, if we see that 80, you know, some percent of our students are actually going on to college, but the state is saying only 65% of them are ready, doesn't, something isn't, isn't quite matching up there. Nonetheless, these are the numbers that we are held accountable to by the state. And I'll get to that when we talk about the school report cards and the accountability designation. So these are some of those subgroup averages that I was mentioning before. I'm not gonna go through each and every number. At the high school level, we don't have a lot of limited English proficient students. These are grade 11 students, remember. So we do have plenty of non-English speaking students at the, at the high school, but they tend to be spread out. And remember that we're only talking about a particular grade level here. Students with IEPs who took the SAT for the state measure and then students who are eligible for free and reduced price lunch. So you'll see that in every instance, the way to read this is that students who are in that subgroup are the yes row and students who are not in that subgroup are the no row. So you'll see in every instance, the no row, no row average is higher than the yes row average, in some cases by a fairly substantial amount. This is the same kind of data presented in a more colorful manner by, by race and ethnicity. So if you kind of look, the, the way to read the legend here is to start kind of from the bottom right and read across from right to left, which I realize doesn't make any sense, but the colors are a little bit hard to see. So the, the far-right bar is the students of two or more races. The next bar is white students. The next bar is African-American students, Asian, American Indian and Hispanic, all the way to the left. So you'll see again, some of the differences in terms of performance between white students, African-American and Hispanic students in particular. Some of the subgroups you'll notice are very, very small. For state reporting purposes, the, the number of students that's required to report a subgroup is 20. So some of these subgroups are, won't be reportable, at least from the point of view of the state. So if we were to ask ourselves, kind of by test scores alone, remember, all of these charts that I just showed you are based on one single assessment. If we were to ask ourselves, you know, are our students college-ready? I mean, I think the answer is, many of them are and some of them maybe are not as well-prepared as, as they could be. One of the other ways that we can help prepare students for college, career and life-readies is actually give them some of those experiences while they're still in high school. So another thing that we look at is the extent to which students are enrolling in, actually, credit, courses for college credit, including AP courses, ACP courses, dual-credit or even industry certification. So over time, the, the numbers of students who are participating in those kinds of experiences, this is looking at seniors only, has increased. And it's kind of steady now for the last two years. So the vast majority of our students are actually having the opportunity to get some exposure to college content in some, or career content in some fashion or another, which I, which I think is a really, a really great thing for us. Somewhere around, I think I may have missed a course, but somewhere around at least 40 students attained some kind of industry certification last year. We also have a KPI that looks specifically at AP participation because the vast majority of our students do go on to college. AP is sort of a particularly, can be a particularly important indicator. So you'll see that we do have about 37% of our students who took at least one AP course last year. If you look at these numbers, you'll see that there are many students who are in fact taking many more than one AP courses. So this is showing you both the numbers of students and the numbers of AP exams. The green bars are the numbers of exams. So there are quite a lot of students who are actually taking multiple AP courses and AP exams. In terms of the success rate, passing, getting a three, four or five on the AP exams, so last year, our passing rate was about 88%, which has kind of been relatively steady over the last, the last years. Another indicator that we could think about, about in terms of being prepared is just are our students graduating? And the answer is yes. The very vast majority of our students are in fact graduating. And most of them, this is our four-year cohort graduation rate, meaning that most of them are graduating within four years. The state will be reporting a four-year, five-year and six-year rate. One of the things we talked about last year was, could we get a more direct way of looking at college readiness in terms of thinking about, are our students actually going on to college? And what kind of success are they finding there? So this is, this is a first attempt at that. These data come from the National Student Clearing House. And right now, we access these data directly through our subscription to the software that students use to actually do a bunch of their college applications and college planning. So I'm not doing any of the matching here, so that's both a blessing and a curse. So the blessing is I don't have to do all the matching. The curse is that I can't see what they're doing. And I have found some inconsistencies when you run different kinds of reports. Sometimes you get slightly different numbers. So I think that's something we're gonna need to keep looking at and taking a closer peek at what's really happening with the matching. And we may start to take that on for ourselves. In the meantime, what we do see is that the students, the percentage of students who are enrolling in college in that first year after high school is about 83%. And if you look nationally, the figure for kind of higher-income suburban districts is about 73 or 74%. So, so we're looking pretty good on, on that metric. Following students through college, so I think the farther they get away from us, the harder it is to say that we had a direct impact on whether or not they were successful in college. But nonetheless, I do think it's, it's an important thing for us to, to take a look at. It turns out that the average number of years for students to complete a college degree now is over five years. So this metric is based around looking at completing a college degree within six years after graduation. And that could be a two-year or, or a four-year degree, that students did full-time, part-time. It's all, it's all rolled in there together. So you'll see, we have about 64% of our students who, who did graduate within six years. Again, the national average for kind of low-poverty schools is somewhere around 54%. So we do have a slightly higher rate. One of the challenges with the National Student Clearing House data that's known is that it just doesn't cover all institutions and it just doesn't cover all students. From what I can tell in terms of what it looks like for us, I think depending on the year and the cohort, it looks like we may be missing 10, 15% of our students. So it's a decent indicator, but we, we don't, I mean, we're not tracking everyone through this, through this metric. So now we're gonna turn to, so that was a sort of fairly direct college readiness for students who are in high school and then actually following them out of high school. We're now gonna turn to looking at elementary students. It doesn't necessarily make sense to talk directly about college and career readiness for students at these ages. But we can talk about the extent to which they are mastering age-appropriate standards because that is something for us to look at in terms of, will they be on track to be college and, and career-ready? So one of the first indicators we have is reading on grade level at third grade because, as has been mentioned, I think probably many times, that's a very strong predictor of, of student success is being able to read on grade level. So what you see here is, this is from the spring of 2018 for all of our third graders. And about 70% of them are reading at or above grade level. And you'll notice, in fact, that the above grade level part of the pie there is bigger than the at-grade level part of the pie. And that, in some ways, hearkens back to what we were looking at for the SAT distribution in terms of having a lot of high-performing students all the way at the, at the high end of the performance distribution. So again, as we talked about a little bit with some of the other scores, the students who are below or approaching the grade level standard, about a third of them are non-English speaking students, limited English proficient. About a fifth of them have IEPs and about a third of them are, are low-income students. If you look at this fall's data, so we have already administered the, the benchmark assessment for this fall, and it actually looks somewhat similar. So I think the, the question and the hope that I have is that, so for, for those students who are in the fall, not at grade level, can we move them to grade level by the spring? So that would be an interesting one for us to look at. Another way for us to think about mastery of standards or, you know, sort of being at or above standard is our, is our PARC data. So this looks at math and English using the state's performance levels. You'll notice that the state has five performance levels for the PARC as opposed to only having four for the SAT. That does mean, I mean, the more you divide students up, the more you have many of them in different categories than you might have if you didn't do that. So, so that is something that we kind of have to take into account. You'll see that roughly about half, a little bit over half of our students are meeting and exceeding. Those are the green bars on the PARC measure for both math and, and ELA. Comparatively, the numbers for the state are somewhere around 35%. So compared to the state, we do have many more students achieving at the meets or exceeds level. These are fairly similar to last year. There are some minor changes, but really, they're very similar to what we saw last year. If we ask ourselves that same question that we were looking at for the SAT related to subgroups, so are all of our students kind of performing at that level? This table just shows you that same kind of information we were looking at for the SAT. So in terms of how many of the students who are in each of these subgroups are performing at levels four or five, those are, that's the meeting and exceeding levels. So if you're looking at these numbers and saying, I can't make these add to 100%, no matter what I do, you are right. And that's because we're only looking at those levels four and five here. So for example, you see that of our limited English proficient students, 8% of them are at levels four and five compared to 54% of our non-limited English proficient students. That is a very double-negative thing to say. Same data that we were looking at for SAT, but now for, for PARC in terms of the, again, the percentages of students who are performing at levels four and five by race and ethnicity. So again, you will, you will see some differences here between many of our student subgroups, including white, Hispanic, African-American. And again, some of those numbers are really small, so won't actually be really reportable. I'm gonna skip this slide because I think I have a better way to talk about growth than... than, than that one. Happy to go back and look at it if anyone really wants to. So, one of the things that we talked about last year and one of the things that I think is actually really important for thinking about our theory of action is all of the data that I just showed you is straight achievement. But there's no reason for us to believe that any of those achievement data are ever going to change if we don't see above-average growth. It's just going to keep staying what it is. And so, one of the things we talked about last year was trying to begin to look at growth. So, we actually do have some data this year and I hope it will prove useful to us. So, we have three different measures that we're going to look at. One related to growth at the elementary level based on PARC, one for PSAT to SAT, and one for English language learners specifically. So, the state actually is now, or the PARC consortium, is computing a measure of growth based on PARC. And so, the way that it works, this may be more detail that you want, but I'm going to give it to you anyway, is it actually takes a student's prior-year test score. So, if you imagine for a moment that where that red dot is, that's a student and, you know, he scored a seven-fifty on last year's PARC. Then if you move over on the chart to the right, you'll see that, you know, in the next year, that student gets a different score on the PARC. There are some students who started in exactly the same place as that student who also got a seven-fifty last year and some of them scored higher than my red student, student A, and some of them scored lower than my red student, student A. So, what the state does is they assign what they call a student growth percentile or an SGP to those students. They essentially rank order the students. So, the student who gets the highest score of all the students who had the same starting score gets a ninety-nine. The student who had the lowest score in the succeeding year, based on all the students who had the same prior score, gets a growth percentile of one. So, they always run from one to ninety-nine. They're a sort of percentile, kind of a score. And that happens everywhere in the distribution. So, every student is always only compared to students who had a similar starting place. So, that's important because when you're looking at growth, you can see different amounts of growth happening at different points in the distribution. And so, the state has actually taken a sort of reasonable statistical approach to try to look at growth here, so, so that's a good thing. So, what we do is we now have a student growth percentile for each and every student. And so, what we can do then is aggregate them up to the district level and look at them by grade or by subject or by subgroup or however we would like to do. So, the way that I've done that here is just to find the median. So, what's the median amount of growth? So, what you would expect, if all of our students grew exactly the same amount as all of the other students in the state, then the median would be fifty. So, what we're looking for when we look at this growth number is a difference from fifty. One problem is that then there is some imprecision in the measures, in the measures, so you want to make sure you're looking for differences that are not a tiny bit different from fifty, but more than a tiny bit different from fifty. So, what I did is that dotted line there is, is a line just at the, at the sixty mark. So, for me, in my sort of professional thinking, if I see growth that's at sixty, you know, median SGP of sixty or above, I'm thinking that's, that's really good. That's showing me that students are growing more than their academic peers on average and I'm very happy about that. What you'll see when you look at these data, these are for ELA and you'll notice that we don't have them for grade-three students because of course, they didn't take PARC as second graders, so we don't have a prior score for them. You'll see that we're pretty much hanging around fifty. So, our students are growing. They're growing no more or no less than their academic peers. For math, you will see that there are some numbers and I'm showing you growth actually from sixteen to seventeen and seventeen to eighteen because I just got my hands on the data all at once and so I wanted to put it all together. And so, you will see that there are some grade levels, in particular, grade eight, where there are some, some growth numbers that look maybe not quite at my standard of sixty, but are pretty, getting close and, and that's a good thing. So, we are seeing some, a little bit of above-average growth happening, happening there. We also now have the opportunity to be looking at growth at the high school level. So, we have at least one cohort of students that we can follow and, and those are what the color coatings here are representing across a number of different grade levels. So, for example, we have one set of students that we can follow as eighth graders into ninth grade from using PSAT eight-nine that they took in eighth grade and PSAT eight-nine that they took as ninth graders. Similarly, we can look at ninth graders going into tenth. We have one set of tenth graders that we can look at going into eleventh. We actually have two sets of eleventh graders who took the PSAT as eleventh graders and then that same year took the SAT. So, that's what we're going to look at here. So, a couple of caveats that I'm going to put out to you here before I explain what all of this is. So, the College Board puts out growth norms so that we know, we have some idea of, you know, what's average, what's expected growth for students moving across those grade levels. What I've done except for PSAT eight to nine is to look at the school-level norms. The College Board actually doesn't put out school-level norms for eight to nine, so I applied student-level norms. So, I, just so you understand, like, this is a little bit not quite what they would do, but it was the only way that I could come up with at the time to, to try to look at this. The other challenge with using these data is that the, all the PSAT and SAT scores, as you probably know, come in ten-point intervals. So, you, you know, you can't get a score of four-hundred-and-eighty-one on the, on the SAT or the PSAT. And that presents a problem because when we're looking at school-level averages, you don't get nice round numbers. And so, you have to sort of interpolate to what their expectations are because those are also published in ten-point intervals. So, you'll see, for example, that all the students who were at Bryan as eighth graders, the average score for them was four-hundred-and-eighty-six-point-five. As ninth graders, that same set of students scored five-hundred-and-three-point-six. The PSAT expectation for students with that starting point is five-twenty. You see, it's a little bit, but you have to interpolate. So, in order to figure out what, what the expectation is, you have to round up from, from the average. So, none, none of this is perfect is, is really the point I want to make to you. So, what I did is, is showed all that data and then in order to try to make this somewhat interpretable, I applied these color coatings and these are my own schema, so these are not College Board-approved color coatings. But what it just tells you is green is really growth that's about average, yellow is a little bit below average, orange is, to my way of thinking, farther below average, and blue is above average. So, you'll see here that orange bad, yellow less bad, green average, blue good.
Mary Ann, the only question I have here that I wouldn't mind if you could explain is Sandberg and Bryan's PSAT eight is very close. Their PSAT nine is very close, Bryan a little bit ahead, to the point where I'm, I'm having trouble personally figuring out how the difference between the five-ten and the five-twenty expectation. I, I know that all the explanations you made about rounding and, and kind of building assumptions in, but those two seem so close together that I, I don't, I, I'm trying to figure out why it looks a little bit different on there.
It, it really is just a judgment about are you going to round up or down? And in one case, I rounded up and in one case, I rounded down.
That's okay. You get to do that. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
But that's what it is. So, you know, like I said, there, there is certainly some, some judgment involved here. So, what you'll see is that, you know, in general, you know, our students, our students are growing, again, they're growing in general, no more or no less than, than their peers, except we see a little, growth that's a little bit less than what I, what I would like to see in that EBRW category. From ninth to tenth grade, similar. So, again, we see about average growth using my scheme in math and a little bit below average in the EBRW. From tenth to eleventh, so this is the one where, to me, the growth looks much lower than what I would, what the College Board says we should expect based on all of the student data that, that they've collected. In math, it looks about average. And then for the two cohorts of students that we have who took PSAT eleven and then SAT in that same, in that same year, we actually see above-average growth. So, I don't know if that means that students are very highly motivated, if something really great is happening. I mean, I, I don't know why that is, but, but this is, this is what it is. So, any question? Well, I'll welcome back to questions. The last piece of growth data that I wanted to show you is growth specifically related to our English language learners. And this is about their growth in terms of English language proficiency. So, every year, our English language learners have to take an assessment called the Access Test, which looks at their English proficiency in, it tests them in speaking, listening, writing, and reading. And then what it does is it comes up with a composite that runs from one to six that gives sort of an overall level of their English language proficiency. Students have to score four-point-eight and those levels correspond just to the numbers. So, if you're in a level one, that means you scored somewhere between one and one-point-nine. If you're in a level two, you scored somewhere between two and two-point-nine and so on. In order to exit the, the program, students have to score a four-point-eight or above. We had forty-three students become proficient in 2018, eighty-six percent of them within the, the state's mandated timeline. So, the state says it should take us five years to get students to English language proficiency. I know that if I, if Arianna were standing here over my shoulder, she would say that language acquisition experts say that it takes longer than that, but that's what the state gives us and that's what we are going to begin to be held accountable to. And so, what you're seeing here is just how much growth or how many proficiency levels did students move based on where they started. And so, what you'll see is that the students who are at the most basic levels of English grow the most and the quickest. Most of our students, that, we have many more students that are assessed and are classified as, as English language learners in the early grades. So, typically, these are also early-grade students and you'll see that the growth declines as they, as they move along and their proficiency becomes harder and harder for them to kind of keep moving forward. We don't see as much growth happening in those higher proficiency levels at this time. Okay. So, some, so that was a lot of information. Some of the changes that we probably should be thinking about for moving into next year, so as I mentioned, the state does have a timeline by which they expect students to become English proficient. And so, they are going to start holding us accountable to that timeline in terms of looking at are students on track to become proficient in that timeline. That's something we'll probably want to track ourselves as well in addition to just looking at straight growth. Are they growth to proficiency? How does that look? The other thing that we want to start to do is, again, to be better aligned to the vision related to the sixes is to start looking, now that we're moving towards standards-based reporting, is to start looking specifically at standards that relate to some of those sixes. So, there are a lot of standards that address critical thinking, communication, and so on. So, we can actually start to look at some of those data and think about the extent to which our students are, are demonstrating those skills that we think are, are an indicator of college career and life readiness. So, to summarize, so if you kind of go back to the original question of, you know, are our students becoming college, career, and, and life-ready? I think that, you know, by some of the direct measures that we have, if we, if we look at are they going to college, you know, are they graduating from college, you know, some of those numbers, I think, look pretty good. Some of our test scores look pretty good. The problem is that they don't look good across the board and so I think that the, you know, we are achieving college, career, and life readiness for many, but, but probably not for all of our, of our students. Okay. So, many of these data that I just talked about are also going to begin to show up on our state school report card and many of them already do. But I do want to make sure that you understand in particular how some of those data are going to be used for accountability purposes. The state has changed its accountability system as a result of the, the ESOP plan that the, that was required by the federal government. And so, one of the most important things for you to understand is just that all schools across the state now will receive one of these four designations. So, every school will, will get a label that's either exemplary, commendable, underperforming, or lowest performing. And I can give you a minute to look at those definitions, but in essence, there's the top ten percent, there's the bottom five percent, and then there are some groups in between. The most perhaps relevant of which is the underperforming category. So, that's schools in which one of this, one of the subgroups, and so that would be one of those racial and ethnic subgroups, might fall below the performance of, of all other students in schools across the state. The way that the state will be coming up with those labels, with those designations, is to take a lot of the data that we just talked about, put it all together into an index, then line up all the schools in the state, draw a line for the top ten percent, draw a line for the bottom ten percent, and then start comparing schools' data to those cut points. So, at the elementary level, they'll be looking at student growth. That's PARC data. That's the SGPs that we were just looking at. So, we know what our PARC data look like. Unfortunately, we don't know what anybody else's looks like, so we don't know how many points we get for our growth because it's a sort of relativistic measure. They will be looking at proficiency on PARC. They will be looking at English language learner progress to proficiency. And they will be looking at chronic absenteeism, which is the percentages of students who have missed ten or more days for any reason, excused, unexcused, it doesn't matter. One thing that I wanted to point out particularly about this is that the proficiency rates for ELA and math are not going to be based on the number of students who are proficient divided by the number of students who tested. They are going to be based on the number of students who were proficient divided by the number of students who should have tested. So, if you, if you have many students who did not, for whatever reason, take the assessment, that those numbers will start to work against us. We do have, in several places, a number of students who refused the test and that will start to impact us in terms of, in terms of these designations. For high schools, you'll see that it's kind of broken up in the same way. The metrics are different. So, instead of growth, they have graduation rates and they have a couple of other indicators that are specific to high school, like ninth grade on track, but otherwise, it, it sort of tracks the, the elementary metrics in general. So, again, on the school report cards, what you will see this year is they will include those labels, those designations. There will be a couple of other new indicators, including the percent of adequacy based on the evidence-based funding tiers that Chris has been talking about, some other new indicators related to, to teachers, and, and so on. The other thing I just wanted to quickly mention is that right now, it is planned that the state will begin to implement some sort of school grades, A to F ratings. This will be based just on student growth, but they would begin to appear in later years. And that would essentially be looking at schools based on their evidence-based funding tier and then dividing them into A to F categories in a normative way. In terms of the state report cards, the reason that I am standing up here giving you all of this information is that we're required to present information and then that information has to be publicly posted. And so, the timeline, just so you understand, for this year, in terms of the state school report card is we are hoping to have a preview by next week and to receive our official designation letters by the end of the month. That means if we have any students that are identified in those bottom two categories, those, those schools become eligible for funding and support from the state and its designated support agencies. And by October thirty-first, all the report card data will become public. That's all I have. I'm going to turn it to Mary unless, unless you want to ask me questions now or wait until Dr. Henderson is done.
Take a drink of water. So, starting last year, we-
Hang on.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to ask Mary Ann first?
All right.
Okay. All right. Shannon?
For the AP, number of students participating in AP, I think is about a third. Is that the entire student population at York?
Twenty-seven-
Twenty-eight hundred, yeah.
Twenty-
From last year, yeah.
Sort of. But are there, are freshmen able to take AP classes?
There aren't many, but there are some freshmen. It's a very small number, as I recall, taking APs. But yes, there are some.
So, that was the entire student population?
Yes.
Thirty, okay. Okay. My, the, you answered the one about SAT, so that's fine. And then National Clearing House, you mentioned we're missing ten to fifteen percent of students that are in college, that went to college?
are in college, that went to college?
Right. So the way that it works is that it's voluntary for institutions, for colleges, two-year, four-year, for-profit, all of them, it's voluntary for them to report their information to the National Student Clearinghouse. The majority of them do. I mean, I think their coverage rate is something like 90%, although it varies by state and things like that. The other thing is that individual students can opt out of having their data reported. So even if an institution reports, if you, Shannon Ebner, say, "I don't want my data reported," then they can't report it.
Can you give some examples of colleges that don't report, that just refuse to report that data?
I gave a bad example before, so I'm not going to repeat it, because I checked my example, and it was wrong. I'm sorry to disappoint.
I'm so disappointed.
I was mistakenly informed that Notre Dame did not report, and I double-checked it, and they do report.
It ruined our evening, too.
Sure ruined mine.
On that point, too, real quick, do we, I remember this conversation with Amy Thompson. Do we sometimes also not fully know which kids go to which schools, or maybe they transfer, or we can't quite follow them all either? Because I remember looking at this a while ago, and I understand it, it's got plenty of hair on it.
Yeah, it's not perfect in a lot of ways. It's the best that we have, because there's no other unit record, like, there just isn't any other system that tracks it. Yeah.
So, one, this is fabulous information. But I think the presentation before about school improvement plans, and Jackson being very bold and forthright in saying what they're going to do, I think this explains why we need to do that. So kudos to Jackson and all the other schools for leading the way, and this supports why we need to do that. The wonderful measures, great. And what I was trying to look at, and I didn't have a chance to figure this out, it appeared as if our third grade, it appeared as if, I took the measures, some of our measures from where we were in third grade and where we were in high school, it appears as if we caught up. So some of the students that were not performing caught up to perform at that high school level, which is, that's wonderful. I don't know how we could track, how we could verify that. I mean, again, I just did, like, it appears. Is there some way we can verify that, to say, you know, we are catching up? I know that's what our growth is intended to do, our growth metrics are intended to do, but I'm just curious if that is consistent with the information you saw.
I mean, we don't have a real direct way to connect those data at this time, because the states, the tests keep changing, and so we can't do a very good job of mapping over a long period of time. I mean, there is a little bit of a mismatch in terms of the performance levels, and that's something that other folks in the state have criticized. So, you know, my guess is the truth probably lies somewhere in between. So yes, probably our students, you know, do catch up, and there are reasons. On the other hand, maybe we're overestimating or underestimating at different points a little bit here and there, too.
Jim?
All right. In a departure from taking cheap shots at my friends on the board here. I do have one statement and a question. So first of all, I'm a big believer in, if you can measure it, you can improve it. And the better you can measure it, the easier it is to improve it. So you have a very important job, and I think you're doing a great job at it. So, thank you. And I'm curious, does our faculty as a whole, our staff, ever see this presentation? Because I think this is highly informative, if you work here.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly has been shared with principals, and, you know, we've encouraged them to share it with staff. I can say for my personal work that I don't think I've done a very good job of working on it with schools, and it's something that I would like to do a better job. So it would probably be a good idea to actually go and sit down with all the principals and go over all of the data that are relevant to them individually. Because even if you just sort of look at the slides, you know what I mean, there are questions, and it's hard to make sense of. And so that's something that, you know, at least I'm personally hoping to do more of and a better job with, and I think Mary may address some of that as well.
I think this is, I would think this is very motivating.
And we are planning to look at it as a leadership team, so that doesn't necessarily involve the faculty directly, but, yeah.
Chris?
I'll just start by rewinding, I don't know, four or five years ago. I mean, we came from a position, I think you guys all ought to look at this, too, as to what you've done, because we came from a position where we didn't collect data. So we started collecting data. Then we started trying to interpret the data. And then we started to try and make it actionable, which is kind of where we are now, as you are ultimately getting into building a culture of using data to create a common view of the facts and the truths, and then build consensus around action, which is that culture that gets embedded in the fabric of an organization and helps it actually excel. And I, it's, I mean, we look at this, and we say, are we having an impact? And I know I think about this, too, and you start to talk to people that maybe don't watch this, and you start talking about what we talk about today versus what we talked about five years ago or six years ago, and it's amazing. So, I mean, you guys should all really take a lot out of what you've accomplished here so far. And I know we have a long way to go, but the nature of this conversation itself is just amazing that we're having it now, and I thank all of you for the work that you've done. Couple questions. These are snapshots, PSAT, Park, San Fuentes, and Pennell. We've had conversations before about new curriculums and assessments, weekly, you know, unit assessments and things like that. And I think you touched on this just briefly with proficiency and standards-based. And I thought, at the time, we had talked about that before, we, you know, ultimately would love to get to a goal where these kinds of conversations happen more about, or more in the context of that kind of data, because it gives you a better line, I guess, or a better path with much more data, many more data points on it, rather than these snapshots and for all their flaws, I guess you do what you can. Where are we on that? Or, you know, as we move towards that, or am I asking for something? I'm just trying to figure out where it is, but it just seems like we talked about it before, where, it's like, we talk about this in the context of snapshots, and I just feel like we're missing student growth when it comes to the way that the teachers really look at it and how it becomes most actionable.
Yeah, I think, so we talked a little bit about this in the Learning and Teaching Committee meeting. So, I mean, these are all lagging indicators, right? Like, we took a snapshot a long time ago, and now we pulled it out of the album, and we're looking at it. But we are collecting data throughout the year. So for example, you know, every student in K through eight is taking, you know, some sort of math assessment, I don't know how often, but every couple of weeks or something. So we have all of those data. We do look at them. The principals look at them. What we haven't done, I think, is kind of, and those are more of our leading indicators, right? That's what we really need to be paying attention to in the moment, and looking at as a team, and the schools looking at. What we haven't done is, I think, put that all together into kind of a multi-measure approach that would help us think about, because I think, I mean, one challenge of doing that is, like, what if you get one really different answer over here and a really different answer over here? What do you make of that? And so we haven't done that yet, and I think that's kind of like where we have to go, is to start to look at that and think about, well, what does it tell us about? Are our measures a little bit off? Are the state's measures, do they seem to be a little bit off? Like, where are we, and how do we make sense of all that information, and we're not quite there yet?
And sure, I know we talked about the state's measures, and as much as that's the reality of what we have, it's, you're not teaching to the test. I mean, the states, we can't change those.
Right, and some of them just do, I mean, they just do different things. Like, the Park, for instance, you know, for instance, looks at students reading and writing. The FNP is really looking much more just at their reading and their reading comprehension. So, you know, there are differences in terms of what you get out of them as well.
Right. And so, yeah, you touched on it. So it's like, there's the day-to-day data that you're now collecting that can help with actionability in real time. And then there's these snapshots that kind of validate what you're looking at or not. But I think from a principal, you talk about talking to the principals and talking to the teachers and helping them with, you know, with their professional development, I would think that the more frequency-based stuff is more interesting. And so I think from our perspective, from my perspective as a board member, I'm more interested in how you guys are impacting actual kids and not numbers that show up once a year. And so I look forward to having those continued conversations as you talk about how those assessments at the classroom level work. Second is just, again, we look at, we're looking at averages of really large numbers. And I understand that, from a factual standpoint, IEP's income level and language barriers have an impact. And that's just the truth of what you're looking at that you presented us. But I'd hate for kids that are in those groups to think that they're expected to not do well. And so, I mean, I've asked this every year, and I know you're kind of, you started a little bit with the Desiles, but just looking at smaller subgroups, not necessarily by income race, you know, language, but just by, you did it at Bryan, Sandberg, and Churchville on an average basis, but, you know, where did the kid in the 50th percentile that showed up, you know, come out the other side? Because to be actionable, you have to get to small enough groups that you can actually influence, because there's not one answer to driving growth for everybody, right? I mean--
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think, right, part of what we have to start to do is to look at the students, you know, who are in that, you know, bottom half of the tail, and figure out who are those students, and, you know, what are the things we can be doing about them? And that's something that we have to start doing on a more consistent basis. I mean, principals and schools do do that work, but I think being able to say specifically what is, you know, happening with certain groups of students, we probably haven't done.
Because, and again, I know that we've done a lot of work in identifying the lower end of the tail. And my question just comes about those that get lost in the middle. And they're not, I mean, you get 30% in the 90th percentile, you've got 30% in the 70th through 90th percentile, and you have some at the tail, but then you've got, you still have a fair amount of kids in the middle. And so, you know, there are certain, I guess, techniques and approaches or things you would use for those kids. And so I'd be interested in just seeing growth measures by kind of level of competency, whether that's based on, you know, as a surrogate, we use a test score or something on the way in. So if you took those Churchville, Bryan, and Sandberg numbers and divided them into quartiles, and we looked at the growth by the quartile versus expected, it tells me more of a story of how we're doing. I get the average, but I don't know what the distribution is. I mean, it could be here, it could be here, and we're trying to get every kid. So again, this isn't a critique, this is just, as we progress, it would be helpful to do that, because that kind of ultimately gets back to our question, I think, as a board, is, you know, you presented a lot of positive things that are going on. There are some gaps that kind of hit you in the face, and you develop plans around that, at what you guys do professionally. And we, as a board, are resource allocators. And so then ultimately, the question that comes in from our perspective is, are we allocating the resources in the right places to impact this? So I can ask you to do this, but if I don't enable you to do it with the resources, then it's a partnership between us in helping us allocate those resources. So that kind of conversation, that's a question I have for you all when you get through there, is as you're putting these plans together, as you're approaching this, are they resourced correctly, and where are the gaps? And I don't have an answer for that, but that's something that I think should enter into the conversation for us at the table.
Yeah. And Margaret asked a very similar question about breaking down some of the growth by subgroups, and I think also by kind of performance level. So that's definitely something, I think it's a good point, and whether or not we want to slide on each of those for this particular presentation, I don't know, but perhaps for schools, it would be something that would be worth us looking at, yeah.
I'm more interested in what you guys are doing, and when it comes, you don't have to, I mean, if you're focused on that, again, we're not doing this just for us, it's more for how you guys do it.
Chris, I think that the subgroup data is important, and I don't want to dismiss that by any stretch, but I'm glad you kind of brought up the concept of a student's learning needs may not be arbitrary by some outside definition. And so I think that several years ago, and I don't think we've still reached the level of assessment literacy that we need to have in this district to truly, you know, pull off the ideal of all students. But we're trying to move in the direction where we do that better and better, and I think the fact that our assessments are getting better, we have better data to look at. And I think an example, that I could give you a concrete example of how we're trying to do exactly what you're asking, is how the elementary schools during the acceleration time are continually flexibly regrouping students, and then those groups are not like permanent groups. They're constantly monitoring the students' progress in regrouping, and it's based on need, and it's based on data. So it's not perfect yet, like, we're still admitting that we need to keep getting better at it, but I think we have more mechanisms in place where we're doing the types of things that you're suggesting. And I don't know, Mary, you may address some of those, so.
Margaret?
There is a slide in your packet that talks about measuring growth for the Park. Can you speak to that to make sure I understand it? And particularly, what I'm looking for is, is that done on a student-by-student basis, or is that done in some type of grouping mechanism?
So it's, they take all of the data for the entire state, for every student in the state, and put it into a big old statistical model, and that's where the growth comes from. So it's all students, it's a little bit misleading the way I say it, but I say it this way because it tends to make it a little bit easier to understand. But students are only being compared with their academic peers. In other words, my SGP comes from looking at where I started, right? And so it's not as if I put all the students who had this score in this bucket, and then all the students who had this score in this bucket, and then I compare them. Like, mathematically, that's not what's happening, but that is conceptually sort of the result of the statistical model.
So, if that's the case, and we have the capacity to look at the growth rate and compare what the growth rate is for every student?
Yes, but at the student level, they are known, well-known, to be pretty imprecise. So basically, anything from 30 to 70 is sort of average. So you really have to look for differences from average at the student level, and it's, so it can be, that's why aggregating up to the district level or the grade level, that, you know, that becomes a better metric of growth.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you very much, Mary Ann, for the way that you approached this. It seems so connected, organic from the classroom and the teachers. I think we've been able to get to the place of the school improvement plans to be really integrated. I mean, I think Jim described it really well, is through the data that you've provided. So I wanted to thank you for wanting to take the next step, which is to work at the building level, because then I think we can get to the places we're looking for, right? My question was really around, so we've got the tail, and I know that the state and the government and whatever, you know, labels, and that's how they kind of segregate the data, the students. But to Chris and, you know, Dave's point, it's about, and I think the word you use, you know, the competencies that the kids have, and is there some common, I'm going to call it, areas of competency support needed for students? And I guess that's what I'm more interested in. I mean, I like the district-wide data, and we want to know that, and I like the fact that you want to have some of the measures, the testing in place for a long time, a longer period of time, so we can start seeing-- period of time, so we can start seeing trends, which will show us a lot more information. But it seems as though what you're showing here, when we implement a new program or the schools, you know, implement their school improvement plans, that they could, I'm going to say in theory, but from what I can see, they can start to see, is what they're implementing making progress? Like, it's impacting the students day-to-day, but at the end of the day, how we can truly see that is, because then they'll perform better, and then your data will show it. So at some point, I mean, I like the fact that the schools are working on it and looking at their students and, you know, day-to-day, week-to-week, now that I'm back in the schools again, I can see the groupings that they're having. What I'd like to do is see, how is that impacting these tails? How is it impacting these groups of students that we're saying, we need to help them? And, you know, so can we, you know, target that? Like, and I can see the pieces, but, you know, kind of the threading, how are we going to do it? And you might be talking about it, Mary, because, I mean, it's all of us working together, but thanks to you, Mary Ann, we actually have some organic, you know, data that shows, really, are we making progress and who do we need to look at, right? And what can we do to support them?
Yep.
And I guess the last thing is, that I keep thinking about, is with your LEP, does the dual-language program, are we going to see some big hitting, you know, improvements with that?
We sure hope so. It's certainly true that that's what other folks have seen when they've implemented those kinds of programs.
So that was an example of the linkage of when we implement a program, we should be able to see the results based on this data. Okay?
We would hope so.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's our target and our objective, right? Okay.
So Mary, you may address this in your talk, so if I steal your thunder, sorry. But is there a reason why the scheduling, like, is the data driving why the PSAT/SAT schedule at the high school is changing? Like, yeah.
I don't know if I'm going to give the answer to the question that you're asking, but I'm going to give an answer, and then you tell me if I got it or not. So we've traditionally done the PSAT in the fall, and for eighth graders, partly that was because it was one of the entrance, or sorry, placement criteria for high schools. So we've removed that as a requirement, although it's still a piece of information that is probably of value to families and students in thinking about course placement. But the state is now going to begin to require PSAT for ninth and 10th graders, and so students will be taking that assessment in the spring, beginning this year. So we will likely drop it because I don't, giving the same test twice in one year does not make a lot of sense to me. And I assume that the state will begin to measure growth using whatever methods it decides are the right ones, whenever they have enough data to do that.
Traditionally, the fall test has been used by the college boards for national merit qualification. The PSAT 11 is the national merit scholarship qualifying exam, so that's the reason why it was administered in the fall.
And we continue, because for that reason, we administered it in grade 11 this fall as well, because we don't want to take away an opportunity for students. So unfortunately, we do have to give that test in the fall still, and then those students will take the, as 11th graders, they'll take the SAT in the spring.
Do you, will some of that be articulated to parents as to why that's changing?
That would be great. Yes.
It's not been communicated at all, and I know there's questions amongst parents as to why the kids aren't taking it this fall.
Okay. Well, that's something I can certainly work with the high school administration about. The assessment calendars are always publicly available to parents. Now, that doesn't help you with the why, but certainly that information about what tests are being administered and when is out there.
Okay, thank you. Mary? Okay. So looking at all the data, discussing the impact, all of that is great, but if we don't talk about how we respond, then it's really a dead-end conversation. So I want to talk just a little bit about implications of some of the data that you have seen tonight. Really, a big purpose is for our teachers and really all levels of the organization to become data-informed. So while we've looked at a lot of very holistic, high-level types of data, what we really want to see, and what our buildings are beginning to do, is really looking at data more deeply and at a more individual level. Again, confronting the brutal facts, bringing those achievement gaps into the light, looking at all of our subgroups, looking at inconsistent results among grade levels or course teams. That's all critical work that needs to be done at the building level. Setting the expectation of using student data in order to discuss instructional improvement. We've discussed professional learning community, PLCs, for the last couple of years now, and that is, we have a set of expectations that is consistent across the district, all levels, EC-12, of what's expected to happen at PLC meetings, and it's driven by student data. Student data could be quantitative, and it also can be qualitative in terms of student work. So it is the expectation that that happens in an ongoing basis in every PLC, from Madison all the way through York. At the elementary level, as you've heard a couple different times, we're in our acceleration for literacy year two. What we really are seeing as the principals talk at our meetings is a refinement to their data, their data meetings. So Karen, one of the things that you mentioned was really taking that data down to the student level, and that's what you see at the individual or grade-level data meetings at elementary. So where you saw Fontis and Pennell results sort of across elementary, they're looking at it, teachers are looking at it at their grade level, and so then it becomes faces and names. It's not 20% are approaching, it's here are the five kids at our grade level, here are their faces and names, how are we responding? And it's interventions and support are put in place, they come back to a data meeting, and they look at the results. And when they can see where students have made great growth, they say, okay, how do we replicate that now for other kids who are struggling? So that is exactly the type of work that you see. Another piece we saw with acceleration, because this is year two, our teachers are more, were more prepared and ready for acceleration, was a three-to-four-week jump on starting a start date as compared to last year. So that was, that's, again, just three to four more weeks where interventions are getting started very early. We've talked, you heard Christine talk about math workshop, guided math, small group instruction. We are seeing that increase across the district and in all of our buildings. With this being year two, a full implementation of Eureka Math, our teachers are now going through the curriculum and the program for a second time, so you will start to see improvements there, as well as Christine talked about, that targeted instruction in small groups or working one-on-one. We've talked about professional learning communities, we're increasing the amount of collaboration time for our teachers at elementary, as well as all buildings, EC-5 are going through formal PLC training this year. It began in the summer, actually tomorrow and Thursday, they'll be back to spend another full day in PLC training. Standards-based reporting, when you talk to teachers who've participated in standards-based reporting, and you heard it just a little bit from Becky Hirsch on the Jackson video, our teachers' conversations when they're working with their colleagues changes. They are very focused on standards, understanding the standards, understanding the rigor of the standards, and how that impacts their instruction, and really looking at their instruction with a laser focus to, is this addressing the standards? Who's needing the standard? Who is not? And it is bringing about an increased level of collaboration among our teachers. At middle school, once again, we are in year two of acceleration, just as we saw for elementary. We bumped up the start date for Tier Two and Tier Three interventions at the middle school by three to four weeks. So again, that's just, you know, another 15 to 20 days of extra intervention and support for our students. One of the things we talked about last year was that at Churchville, we have a higher number of students who are what we would consider a Tier Three need for support, so they are performing significantly below grade level. So we feel like acceleration is not enough support for that. So just like we do in reading at all of our middle schools, we have what's called a reading strategies class for kids who are reading two or more years below grade level. At Churchville, where we have that need, we have a Tier Three math strategy class for kids who are two or more years below grade level. It takes place every day in place of an elective for 40 minutes a day. Across all of our middle schools, we're seeing, again, an increase in co-teaching. The reason why that's such an important support is what we would see previously for students who have special education needs, students who have second language needs, they would be removed from the classroom for support. What happens then is they have less access to grade-level content, that gap never closes. If they're out of the room and they're receiving instruction that is always below grade level, they never have the opportunity to catch up. So the more we can implement effective co-teaching, the more it ensures that our students who are currently below grade level are still getting rigorous, strong grade-level content instruction with support. Implementation of the math workshop model. So something you haven't often seen at the secondary level is a workshop model. It's typically, and historically in schools, kids are tracked and separated into groups. We know that's not best for student growth. So our sixth-grade math curriculum, the on-grade level course, all of the schools are going through professional learning, implementation, observing in each other's classrooms, the implementation of the math workshop model, which, again, provides targeted instruction, whether it's support or enrichment for kids. And then our ELA teachers are going through professional learning on the workshop model for middle school as well. Something that's not across the board at all of our middle schools, but some very focused work we are doing at Churchville, is in response to looking at the academic growth of our EL subgroup, so our students with second language needs. As Mary Ann showed on that chart, you see the growth go down a little bit as students increase in proficiency levels. One of the things we know is that as students' language proficiency begins to increase and as grade levels increase, that need for academic language, so the formal language of education, becomes critically important. And that's what you see in every test that measures student achievement, is the academic language is used. So their teachers, entire staff, are participating in professional learning, really job-embedded professional learning on language objectives. So you've seen us in the past talk about learning targets, where a teacher is posting what the instructional target is for that lesson. Additionally, what we'll see Churchville teachers using, we see it at Fisher, are language objectives. So they can start to embed, okay, it's critical, critically important that we are using, like, the appropriate statistical content language or the science academic language. So it becomes just another reinforcer, another highlight. So we expect to see some improvement in that. When we look at the high school, this year, we are seeing a decreased number of separate courses for students with second language needs and students with special education needs. And again, it goes right back to what I said with middle school, when we remove them from grade-level content with their peers, we don't see them getting the exposure and experience with the rigorous standards that we need to. We also are having an increased number of co-taught grade-level content classes. And then our high school has developed a year-long professional learning calendar that is very targeted by department as well as school-wide. So they are focusing on the succeeds as well as embedding rigor into all of their lessons. Any questions about that portion?
Thank you.
All right. Next is high school course proposals. Dr. Cohen?
As I don't have a presentation, I'll stay here, no fancy slides. We have five new course proposals for York High School. Much of the course proposals, we've talked about it nauseam here in some different settings. The first one is going to be Project Lead the Way, Introduction to Engineering Design. Dan Kalenberg and Joe Stoltz have been working on putting that curriculum together. It's the natural offshoot of the middle school Project Lead the Way courses, which came into play this year. And they're going to matriculate through, will be adding a course every year at the high school until we have four years' worth of Project Lead the Way engineering content. This is the first one, Principles of Engineering, would follow in 2021, followed by any number of electives that could be in there, whether it's the civil engineering and architecture or electrical aerospace, there are a variety of different options, and then followed by an engineering capstone in senior year where they actually create an engineering project. That course proposal is squared away, set to go, they would go to training for that curriculum next summer. Manufacturing Technology, new course proposal, with the renovations to the manufacturing, new manufacturing space at York completed. We're using our Perkins Grant, our CTEG grant, as well as a donation from the foundation to acquire three more mills and three lathes to put into that space. The manufacturing class is an honors-weighted class, it is dual-credit with College of DuPage. We have the business incubator starting next year, that course proposal is in here. We already have a teacher at York High School who has attended the incubator EDU summit this past summer, and is starting to put together curriculum for that course. We put together the outline already for your review. The incubator course is replacing an entrepreneurship course, and it really is focused on business principles, but also incorporates around a design or a product, whether it's a product or a service, that they have to create and then pitch. It's very much like Shark Tank. The course requires a lot of outside mentorship and bringing in people to be mentors, but also people to be sort of the sharks, if you will, when it comes time to pitch their product or service. And then finally, you have two courses, new courses at the freshman level that replace World Studies. World Studies has been the introductory social science course for years, and there was no, all freshmen through that course, and we're making a shift to human geography. And the reason why is based on a change in Illinois learning standards for social science. You know, there are five big buckets of knowledge that social science, the social science standards revolve around. You have history, economics, geography, civics, and then the fifth standard, which is actually skill-based, which is the inquiry skill. And when we look at 612 curriculum to this point, if you took 612 curriculum, five of the seven years were all history, and there was no geography as a part of that. So the AP human geography and human geography courses will be introduced at the freshman level. It would be an AP option at the freshman level, it would be accessible to almost every student. We usually, we probably anticipate having about 50%, up to 50% of the freshmen opting for that AP course. And it's really based upon, instead of just chronological development over time, what happened, you know, the Missouri Compromise led to the Compromise of 1850 led to the Civil War, it really is focused on, you know, why are we sitting here now, right now in this room versus 100 miles away? You know, how do civilizations evolve based upon resources and transportation? Why do borders fall the way they fall? And how has that led to current, you know, the current situation we have in the world today? So it's going to be sort of a mindset shift for our social science teachers at York. With the retirement of the traditional World Studies, we're transitioning that course, that's the course modification to a World History course. It's going to be a one semester course, honors weight, and it's going to be a thematic approach to history. So it also won't be a strictly chronologically-based course, build, revolve around themes such as revolutions. How is, was the American Revolution similar to the Bolshevik Revolution, similar to the Arab Spring, and where the characteristics have made some revolutions successful versus others not being? So the social science department has really done a great job through the CDT process of coming up with these courses, and then our elective areas at York as well with their manufacturing and engineering and business courses. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Shannon?
Is the human geography course, is that a requirement for freshmen to take AP or regular?
Yes.
Do they have to take that class?
Well, it would be, it would be the freshman social science elective. Or the freshman social science course, yes.
You have to take a social science course freshman year?
Well, three credits are, I'm sorry, three years are required for graduation.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think that's, I like this, I like these proposals. I think those are good changes. I think those are good changes. Anything else? All right. Anything else? Okay. All right, thank you.
Are these things we have to approve?
At the next board meeting. Got it.
Yeah, Karen?
I do have a question for the engineering pathway. So I think that was the only one that has significant cost for the equipment? Is that being funded? Go ahead.
The, many of the things that are high-priced items are things that are already equipped in our manufacturing and engineering spaces already. Things like 3D printers, some of the other infrastructure, the computer labs. So we don't see a very large cost coming in. One of the projects that Dan and Joe have ahead of them is to put together materials list of the things that they would need. Initially, if you were to go by the Project Lead the Way calculator, it would tell you that this course could be close to six figures to get off the ground. But we believe we have many of the components already in place. So really, our major overhead costs would just be training for the two of them, which would be regional, either Indianapolis or Milwaukee, and then some minor equipment costs, but nothing substantial, calipers and things of that nature.
They're just typical things that are already that we budgeted?
Many large capital items are already in place.
Okay. All right. Superintendent's agenda, consent agenda. I just need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the instructional resource, What I Say Goes, by Janie Sanders, as recommended by the administration.
Second. All right, it's consent, so go ahead, Jenna.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no n's. Motion passes. All right, next up is the superintendent's agenda action items. Approval of agreement between Elmhurst Community School District 205 and Elmhurst Teachers' Council, Local 571, American Federation of Teachers.
Okay, so the, last week, the Elmhurst Teachers' Council ratified the tentative agreement, and we are asking the board for its approval tonight. And so I will let Jim make any comments that he would like to highlight as it relates to the rationale, and just indicate that we had what I would consider to be a very collaborative dialogue to come to this point in the process, so.
We started negotiating in February of this year, and we negotiated all outside of school hours, which was a great benefit for not having teachers pulled from the classrooms. We met every Thursday from February 8th to May 31st, with two exceptions on Thursdays after school for four hours. A huge credit to the Elmhurst teachers for the time that they committed in trying to help us stay focused on developing a student-centered contract, which we were able to accomplish, while also maintaining sensitivities to compensation levels that would allow us as a district to continue to move forward and be fiscally responsible. So I'm very pleased, I've kept the board apprised of all of the main points of the negotiations as we've gone through negotiating this agreement, and I'm very, very pleased that the teachers of the district saw fit to ratify the contract. And so I'm requesting that the board approve the agreement this evening.
Thank you, Jim. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021 agreement between Elmhurst Community School District 205 and Elmhurst Teachers' Council, Local 571, American Federation of Teachers.
I'll second.
So on behalf of the board, we'd like to extend our deep appreciation for the dedication, hard work, and commitment exhibited by the administration and the Elmhurst Teachers' Council in reaching an agreement. This agreement between the board and the teachers reflects fiscal responsibility, honors the experience of our teachers, and provides for professional collaboration, while most importantly, focusing on what is best for students. The agreement provides an increase in base salary to recruit and retain teachers of high caliber, and offers opportunities for teachers to continue their professional development. Our teachers also agreed to extend their workday for the purposes of increasing student supervision and professional collaboration. So thank you to all who made this happen. The board is grateful. The new agreement will be retroactive to July 1st, 2018. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Grateful for the work to get us this far, and will extend until June 30th, 2021.
Go ahead and call the vote. Any other discussion? There is none. Make all the vote.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no n's. The motion passes.
Oops. Sorry, I can't find it. Okay, next up is approval of superintendent's annual goals for the 2018-2019 school year. The superintendent and the board will agree to two or three professional goals no later than October 1st of each school year. The superintendent and the board have agreed to the following goals. Goal number one, continue to build leadership capacity at all levels of the organization with a focus this year on principals, cabinet, and personal leadership. Goal number two, create and implement a district process to be followed when implementing a change across the district. This process should include how each stakeholder group in the district is a part of the change and the strategic communications that will take place throughout the process. These goals directly support the district's overarching organizational goals of student achievement, district culture, finance, and district management. The superintendent and the board will review progress toward goal attainment in January of each year, each school year. The board will rate the superintendent's progress toward the actual goal attainment as either satisfactory or unsatisfactory, as part of his final summative evaluation by June of each school year. With that, I'll ask for a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's annual goals for the 2018-2019 school year.
I'll second that.
There's none? Go ahead and call the vote.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no n's. The motion passes.
Okay, so for superintendent's communication, couple lessons learned tonight. Number one, Mary Ann's never allowed to veer too far away from the microphone. I think we learned that. But I did want to thank the board as part of the presentation tonight for recognizing and commenting on some of the progress that we've made in these areas over the course of the last several years. If you recall, and I'll go back to my frame of reference, and a lot of you go back further than that, but when I got here, you know, I felt that we were doing things, and it wasn't necessarily that they were bad, but there wasn't necessarily a lot of focus or systematic approach to some of them. And each year, we tried to refine the process, and you're never really perfect, but we tried to start out with some of the student achievement objectives, just to get people focused and get a common conversation about where we're trying to go. And through that, we started, you know, the whole process really depended on the importance of PLCs. And I think you've seen some evolution there. But each year, we've tried to refine the school improvement planning process, and we've gotten to the point where we're talking about short psycho-goals. Christine referenced that. We're talking about more sophisticated assessments. And in the process, we've been able to support the process with instructional coaches, and some of the things that you've asked to see going forward are going to be enhanced when the data warehouse comes to fruition, the things we're doing with interventions. And you may lose track in the day-to-day, the fact that you approved every single one of these things at one point or another over the last several years. You gave us the opportunity to do these things, and I know that sometimes some of the conversations were a little bit difficult, and especially in the initial phases, people were trying to get their head wrapped around why we were doing things and where we were trying to go. But I think tonight was a good example of how far we've come. It's really refreshing to see that kind of all come together in one place, and so I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to do that. It's, we're not done yet, but we appreciate that. And so I don't know if that actually relates to the tweet of the week, but the tweet of the week is the next item.
Well, as you all know, we have begun highlighting some of our teachers' work and also our students' work on social media, specifically through the medium of Twitter. And the D205 Tweet of the Week from our Ignite D205 hashtag goes to the Reach Sorrentino Classroom at Hawthorne, and they go by the Twitter handle of @reachsorrentino. And you can see from the tweet that it is highlighting the third graders' work, and they are learning how to conserve and how to preserve the environment. Particularly, they polluted a stream or a salt creek, and then they came back the next day and applied the solution. And the hashtags go with it, and it's a shout-out to @HawthorneD205, hashtag IgniteD205, and hashtag Scare, who provided them the model. So congratulations to @reachsorrentinoClass. Thank you.
Okay, Learning and Teaching Committee report?
So Learning and Teaching met last Thursday, I believe that was October 3rd, 4th, sorry. We covered the vast majority of what we talked about at the Learning and Teaching Committee meeting. Mary and Mary Ann covered it tonight, but there is some items that we did not cover tonight, and I'm going to turn those over to Mary to cover.
This time I was prepared. I have the minutes pulled up, and I am ready to go. Last time I was not. So as Jim said, we talked about, a lot about the KPIs and the state reporting system, so I won't go over that part again. One of the items we did discuss was the administrative practice for senior exam exemption. So taking all the feedback from the board at the last discussion, the high school came back. Ryan joined us for this portion of the meeting and talked about some other criteria, incorporating some of the feedback about wanting grades to figure in to it. We're not done yet. That feedback that we shared at the discussion Thursday night of looking at grades of C or better, looking at all absences as opposed to just unexcused, and again, some of the behavior criteria that we discussed at the full board meeting last time. Ryan is taking that feedback back to the high school. They want to run it through their admin and IAC again, just before we share it again with the full board, to make sure that everyone is in agreement and on board. We also talked about, just moving down here. We also talked about an item with the high school, which is travel for our students outside of the country. One of the things that we have been talking about in terms of college career and life ready, we are one of the few high schools in the area that does not, that has not had our students participate in any type of experiences that are outside the boundaries of the United States, whether it is a foreign exchange student experience for our students who are studying language, or any of the other opportunities. As our students are applying for colleges and participating in visits and having dialogue with different universities, they're being asked about some of these other types of experiential learning, that they don't see our students doing that, and it's just a gap that we have. So we'd like to remedy that, and we've talked about some opportunities and taking the feedback from Margaret and Jim, who are at the Learning and Teaching Committee. I'm going to be sharing out with the whole board some communication on some of our thoughts, some of the vendors, and some of the experiences we would like to have for our students. So a full, a full board communication is going to be coming toward the end of the week for you to see and take into consideration. Yeah, I'm going to have. Okay. So a third area that we talked about with the high school, so Ryan was with us for quite a while during the meeting. Though we know this is a policy decision and a conversation that the full board wants to have, we did talk about the PE exemption being extended in terms of what the learning and teaching implications would be. So in the minutes, you can see that we talked about ISPE fitness data that needs to be collected on all students, working health and driver's ed into the student's schedule, and then how we accommodate kids floating in and out, and what some of the staffing implications are. So there's quite a bit of detail in the minutes that are posted, and we know that that's a conversation that's going to come back to the full board, but we wanted Ryan just to kind of share out what some of those learning and teaching implications would We also talked about the homework practice in District 205. For the second year, our elementary principals have shared with their parents that in alignment with research that shows that homework has little to no positive impact on our students at these younger ages, that there will be minimal homework for our elementary students. We encourage and ask that our students read every night as part of their development of reading skills. However, sending home homework on a daily basis is not something that our elementary schools are doing. This was something our elementary principal group felt very strongly about last year, and put that practice into place. They shared it with parents last fall. They shared it again this fall. It's been very well-received by our parent group. We believe that our students at that age need to really focus on time to decompress and have time away from the school environment, family activities, developing passions and interests in things that might not be a part of their school day. So that's really our area of emphasis. At the middle school, when we look at homework, you do start to see philosophies sort of diverge among teachers, and even among teachers in similar content areas. And while research does show that there is some value, there are some caveats to that. The homework needs to be purposeful, and it also requires that feedback is given to students from teachers, for it to be purposeful and really have an academic impact. We see that there will be an opportunity to influence homework practices as we move into standards-based reporting with our middle schools. As I shared with you with the elementary teachers, the conversations really become focused on standard. As I shared with you with the elementary teachers, the conversations really become focused on standards and students demonstrating mastery of standards. And so homework really needs to follow that practice as well. So next year, as we move into standards-based reporting for our sixth graders, we believe that we're going to start to see that standards-based reporting will really influence what homework looks like at middle school. That did need, that did move us into standards-based reporting at the middle school, which we talked about. So as you know, K5 has fully implemented standards-based reporting this year. So next year, we will move into sixth grade. I shared with you last year that our plan is to roll up one grade at a time at middle school. We believe that it would be anxiety-producing for parents and students alike if we were to roll it out across three grade levels at one time and have students in eighth grade and their families in eighth grade who are thinking about that transition to York be thrust into a completely different grading practice and system with no prior experience. So by rolling it up one grade level at a time, students and parents will have had some familiarity with it and we can build on those practices.
Mary, can I just, I just want to interject. I know that you go through this so often in your own head that, you know, it's like...
Second nature.
Right. But at the middle school level, we haven't gotten into that much at the Board level because we've been, we had the pilot last year, we had everything else. But at the middle school level, the students also do get a grade.
Right. I'm just not there yet.
Okay. Oh, you are. We're going to say that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Then I didn't need to do that.
Yeah. So unlike elementary school, which is all standards-based, there are no letter grades at elementary school at any grade. In the middle school, our plan is to use a hybrid model. So what you typically see now on a middle school report card is the course name and the letter grade. And that's, and that's essentially it. What you will see is the standards that are being reported on with a rating for each of those standards in addition to a letter grade. So the information our middle school students and parents will be receiving is far more detailed than what they've had in the past. And we think that standards-based reporting is designed to increase the accountability and ownership of students so they really become learning-driven versus how do I get enough points to earn a letter grade that isn't really in their minds connected to learning. So at that meeting, we shared what a sample report card could look like. And let's see, I'm just looking here. We've done, we've started professional learning for our middle school teachers. I was really pleased after our August professional learning that we gave them an opportunity to talk about their greatest hopes moving into standards-based regting and their greatest fears. We collected it from every grade level and department. And really across the middle schools, we saw one philosophical disagreement, the other greatest fears were all tied to logistics. So that really speaks volumes about the readiness of our staff to start to look at grading and reporting differently. So we are very pleased about that. The rest of the meeting was Mary Ann talking about KPIs and changes to the state accountability, so I won't repeat that. It was a very good productive meeting, two hours and 20 minutes.
Anything else? Okay, good.
Oh, yeah.
For the standards-based grading at the elementary, can parents access that in Power School so they can see the progress of students? Will that be ever on Power School or?
Right now, it's not up for discussion. Right now, they cannot see the progress on the standards. Typically in elementary schools, our teachers have not used the grade book in Power School and made that available. This year, we don't require them to use Power School grade book, so some teachers do, some don't. So right now, we don't have plans to, but that doesn't mean as our teachers become more comfortable and confident that we wouldn't.
When would a report come out then? A trimester?
It's a trimester, just like report cards do now, yes. It'll be avail, so we won't be printing report cards anymore. They'll be available in Power School the way we do at our upper grades unless we know that a family needs a printed report card.
Just so my expression when you announced changes in homework policy is explained. 20 years ago, we were told about the research for elementary kids, which means for 20 years, we've been going ahead and doing homework. And I think it's a tribute to the organizational changes that have happened in the district that finally the professionals are leading on this. And yeah, too late for my kids, but I'm glad it's finally accomplished. Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Okay, Finance and Operations Committee report?
All right, I won't throw a whelp under the bus. I'll actually do this myself. I know Collins went Illinois, so I know. I had to come back at some point.
We can delegate.
We'll leave it at that. Our meeting was not as exciting as yours. Several items. Okay, the first two items, A and B, August and Fiscal '18 Year End, would already come to the Board on an aggregate basis. They were on the agenda mainly, the conversation mainly was around, I actually wanted more detail on tax collections. There were some anomalies in tax collections for August. And Chris presented a spreadsheet that showed that basically this year, we collected about 20 million more than we did last year in August and then by the end of September, that should have reversed out. So the main reason these topics were on there were just to better understand the timing because there's so many, the numbers are so big and they're moving in and out. And I think that we didn't unearth any major revelations beyond what's been shown at the Board table as far as it's being driven by early property tax payments and then this weird odd shift even separate from that. Yeah, it just, they were distributed differently for some odd reason, but it did indeed reverse itself out. The Fiscal '19 Final Budget, the conversation there mainly revolved around maintenance, CapEx, and sustainability. And, you know, I think we understand that that's an issue that needs to be addressed. I think what came out of the meeting is we agreed that Todd is working on an updated report on CapEx. So traditionally, we had a 10-year CapEx plan that Frank showed us. Todd's producing more rigor on that to give the Board a better idea of, you know, really what we need over the next several years, but then, you know, a longer look out, but a focus on the nearer term. And then an agreement that I think at the Board level, we need to have a conversation about funding that, but that would be premature to have prior to November. So we will bring that, bring that kind of discussion, one, when Todd has his report done and two, after we know the results in November. And it's kind of getting ready for that conversation about where do we go there, but it all depends on what happens in November. Next item, procurement guidelines. Basically, this was something that was put on the agenda based upon conversations at prior vote, at prior Board meetings. And I think the Committee had reached consensus that the recommendation is to create a framework for capturing and communicating the process and rationale for sole source contracts and purchases. So, you know, when we have a bid out, a purchasing situation, we get a record of all the bids and who bid and measuring that. But when we have sole source, we didn't have a particular framework for reporting on that. And so the administration is going to work on developing, you know, a framework that captures the rationale and different pieces of the process they went through in recommending that. So more rigor around it, I guess, unless there's anything else. And then finally, and I may ask Chris to correct me if I'm wrong here, but... So Chris had asked about the willingness, our perception of the willingness of the Board to consider a pilot program whereby excess capacity, if any, on bus routes would be made available for a fee to families that would not otherwise, are not otherwise required to be served. And basically, it's just taking excess capacity that we've already paid for on buses and making that open and selling it. And so I think that there's a broader conversation at the Board level on this that will come to the Board. I think that our recommendation to Chris was, you know, go ahead and bring that to the Board. It would be worth a discussion unless you guys think otherwise. But if so, then I think at a future Board meeting, Chris will bring the more complete proposal to the Board. And that was it?
Yeah, we're going to have the fee recommendation at the October 23rd Board meeting on that. And it's for students currently not eligible, so they're within 1.5 miles and there's an existing bus route, there's an existing bus stop within a safe walking distance, and there is space available on that bus.
Okay, anything else? I just have one thing. Karen and Jim and I all went to the IASB regional meeting last week and had dinner and a very nice presentation on, about, a lot about stress and social emotional things with students that we would like to revisit at some point in a discussion. But I also picked up someone's recognition, so I wanted to bring that. Margaret was recognized and unable to be there for being a Master Board member. So I believe she gets a nice plaque and so congratulations, Margaret. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we have two upcoming meetings scheduled. Tuesday, October 23rd, regular scheduled Board of Education meeting here in District 205 Center at 7:30. And Tuesday, November 13th, Board of Education meeting, 7:30 here in District 205 Center. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.